Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM on October 14th, 2019. And I would like to call regular agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Perez will be recognized by the chair.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank everyone for being here today. The invocation will be given by Pastor Joseph Raimentos from New Hope at the border, and followed by the pledge allegiance will be led by members of elementary, City of Mustangville officials for 2019-2020. And we do have present with us is Mayor Gunnar Salas, City Manager Jalen Palacios, City Council Place One, Joaquin Ruiz, City Council Place Two, Jonathan Moreno, City Council Place Three, Leah Marquez, City Council Place Four, Emma Perez, and the Chief of Police, Lucio Reyna. If I can have everyone please stand, and Pastor, if you can, please.
Let us pray. Father God in heaven, once again we recognize your sovereignty, your power, and all authority. We thank you for the wonderful privilege that you have given upon our beloved mayor, members of his city council, the police chief at his department, and all the other officials that work around him. We thank you for how you would remind them time and again that it was you through us, the people, have placed them in their respective posts of authority. And in recognizing that, we ask the God that you will give them your wisdom, your knowledge, your strength, to be able to understand as they deliberate on things that concerns us the most. And in giving them understanding, Lord, give them the strength to endure with hardship and not to give up. We also ask for your love, your mercy, and your kindness that will flow through them as they deal with people around them. I ask the God that you will give them not only an iron plaid fist, but a velvet heart, to be able to balance everything and in making those wise decisions cause them to remember, to give them back to you all the praise, the glory, and honor. And we thank you that we may just be a small part of their constituency in supporting them in prayer and in any other manner or form that are given to us, given them in their deliberation tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
City of Mustangville will be conducting the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we're sustained, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God and one individual.
Thank you.
You all want to join us for a picture? Reverend.
Our mistake, now City Council's going to take over Mission City.
Reverend over here with us. The representative of God always goes in the middle. Thank you. Where's the mayor? The mayor? Right here, Mayor. Mayor, right here, right?
Hello, Mayor, are you going to say hi to me, Gunnar? Do I get a hug?
Right here, Gunnar.
It would be so awkward, because they could stand in front of their respective--
Yes.
Yes, whoever's the mayor needs to be next to the mayor.
Place two?
Hi. Hi.
Where's place two?
Hi. Hi.
Maybe Mr. Flatta come over.
Place two? Place two, over here. Place three?
Our police chief.
Right here. Place four?
Place two's wearing a suit.
Right here.
Place two's wearing a suit.
And the police chief, the police chief.
Place one is wearing that. That's good.
Who's the police chief? Anybody ready? Please come out, please. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
High five, Governor. Good, bye. Have fun. Y'all have fun.
I'm sorry. As a business guy. But I really hope of you.
Thank you, City of Mustangville, for being here, and parents for allowing them to participate. Thank you.
Will the parents stand up, please, for Mustangville, and the principal also, so they get recognized? At this age, citizenship is very, very important for the future of the United States of America, the state of Texas, the state of Nigado, and especially for the city of Mission. Thank you very much, Mustangville, for doing that endeavor and showing our children at this age what it is to be governed by all the people, by the people, and for the people.
Amen, yes.
Regular meeting agenda item number three, Mr. Perez, the chair recognizes you.
Yes, we do have a presentation from Ms. Mariana Wright from the National Butterfly Center.
No? Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. First, I want to thank the Mission Fire Department. They frequently donate the old hoses that no longer serve them to us, and they serve us very well, and we are grateful for that donation.
Chief Sanchez, will you stand up and be recognized?
Thank you. We would like to offer something to the city in return. As we represent the city all over the country and continue to invite visitors here, we want to see our city grow in beauty and renown. We would like to give the city at least 12 of the wild Texas olive trees, to have them planted, if possible, in front of the water treatment facility so that they can enhance the view and help also produce clean air, filter the air, because that's what trees do. And if the city is able to accept that gift, we can make arrangements for that, and perhaps a planting on Arbor Day, or something like that.
Yeah, the city will instruct the city manager to take charge of these items and do the appropriate paperwork and appropriate agendas items.
Thank you very much. We want to continue to give back. So, it's been a while since I've been here, and we're headed into our busy season. We're coming up on haunted trails. This is our second year of this. Last year, it brought about 2,000 people to the city of Mission at night. They came and got scared, and then, you know, they hit restaurants and bars and did other things around the area. The police department is already aware, and we're grateful for their support. We had no incidents last year of anybody misbehaving, and I hope that we can put this poster up at City Hall to invite all of the citizens who come in so they are aware of haunted trails. We also have the Texas Butterfly Festival coming up. This is the 24th annual and our eighth year, I believe, organizing and operating it. Each of you have received an invitation to the dinner. I hope that you will please come and support our work in this event. We have Emmy award-winning filmmaker Anne Johnson Prem is our keynote speaker. She is the one who made Sex, Lies, and Butterflies for PBS Nature, and it was filmed in part in Mission, Texas, at the National Butterfly Center and is seen around the world. The community is also invited out for Community Day, Saturday, November 2nd. We hope everyone will come out for environmental education and fun and games to learn about the things that make Mission and the Rio Grande Valley so incredibly rich and special in the natural realm. We were recently featured in Texas Highways Magazine. I don't know if City Hall receives this, but the National Butterfly Center, along with the William Jennings Bryant House, were featured for all we do for conservation and environmental education. So, please pick this up if you didn't get it. That was free advertising for the city of Mission in a big editorial spread. And we have launched for next year, the Wild Gardening Festival. For every butterfly, there are probably 50 gardeners on the planet, so we're hoping that over time, this will grow into something that brings people here in the springtime, around Earth Day, from all over the United States, especially from places where it's still snowing and awful. They can come down here during the peak of wildflower season and learn all about how to plant for birds and butterflies in their communities from our experts. And we hope you'll check out the website. We have a spectacular group of presenters coming to Mission for that. And last, I would like to ask that the city arrange for a screening of the documentary, I Mariposa. It has been presented coast to coast and has been entered in the Las Americas Film Festival. It features the National Butterfly Center and Lupe, La Unión del Pueblo Entero, and all of the issues related to our battle against the border wall. It is a remarkable film, and it was made by a team of women who have been fighting for justice on the borderlands for more than a decade. And I can send you information on that. But I do think it's something important to educate all of our citizens about all that is at stake with the loss of private property and the desecration of a remnant of native habitat that supports our way of life, not to mention the poisoning of our river, which is the only source of fresh water for more than 6 million residents in South Texas. Do you all have any questions for me?
No? Any questions to any of the council?
Thank you.
Well, you did a good job with all the information.
Thank you.
It was very nice.
Lots going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Regular meeting agenda item number four, Ms. Enriquez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, this Thursday, we're really excited as we will be hosting our annual awards banquet. So, we requested nominations from our membership to submit nominations for Business of the Year, Business Leader of the Year, and Community Impact Award. So, we're really excited, and we will be announcing the winners of this Thursday's annual awards banquet. So, we're excited. We do have, of course, a special place for the city of Mission and City Council, so we hope that you can join us that evening. And the chamber will now be having, we have implemented monthly membership meetings for both new and current members so we can continue the business development purposes in the city of Mission. So, it's going to be a standing meeting every month, and so we'd like, I'll probably work with the city to have somebody come and join us for those meetings as well, to hear from our business leaders. And that one's scheduled for October 29th. Next week, I have, I'm working with Idea University, and what we did is we're putting together a roundtable discussion, and I have invited key business partners in the community for a discussion on job development and demands because they're noticing that the university, they want to know and learn more from employers as to what skills are they looking for because there's a gap. So, we'll be hosting a roundtable discussion next week with some community partners as well. And on the tourism, we have partnered with Welcome Home, RGV, and what we're going to be doing is, they are celebrating the homecoming of the winter Texan population, and it's going to be held here at the Mission Events Center on December 12th. And our wonderful citrus business has, they will be donating a grapefruit, and we're going to be gifting one to every winter Texan. So, we're, yeah, so we're going to be having about, maybe like 1,000 winter Texans. So, that's what we have right now going on in tourism.
Good. Any questions for the council, for the chamber? By the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Enriquez. Regular meeting agenda item number five, departmental reports. Any questions, anything?
May I move to approve the reports as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And for questions, I'm going to ask the chief, are you ready, chief? For your presentation of the three slides? We'll leave it pending for the next one, okay? Okay. There's an opening for questions? No questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda item number six, citizens' participation. Ms. Carrillo?
Mayor, we did not have anyone sign up for citizens' participation.
Or any of the items ready?
No.
Thank you. And we're moving right along. We're going to move to 1.0, public hearings, and call for 1.1, planning and zoning recommendations. 1.1A, the agenda, Mr. Acevedo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. 1.1A is a public hearing for a proposed annexation of 440.19 acres, more or less, as outlined on the exhibit there on the write-ups that were presented. There's a total of seven tracts that are being considered. On voluntary annexations, the city council is required to have two public hearings to acquire public input. We enclosed a vicinity map depicting the above-described properties, and the properties are adjacent to the city limits, and the city water and sewer are also available and in the area. Areas 1.7 are under voluntary annexation. We did receive a request from the property owner to be considered for the annexation, and this is the first of two public hearings. And if approved, this annexation would take effect January 1st of 2020. And staff and city manager are recommending approval of this proposed annexation. Again, this is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this annexation? I don't see anyone approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any questions from any of the council members? No questions?
I will entertain the motion?
No motion is required, right?
No motion is required. This is the public hearing.
This is just a public hearing. No motion is required, council.
The second public hearing will come at a later date at the next city council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. I'll call for 1.1B.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 1, 2, 4, and 5 of Padron subdivision from AOI, Agricultural Open Introm, to C3, General Business. The applicant is Ida Gara Sain. If the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 25th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located between Moorfield and Inspiration Road along the north side of West Mile 3 Road. The surrounding zones include outside of the city limits to the north. To the west and east is agricultural open interim, and to the south is general commercial. The existing land uses are agriculture to the north and east and west, and to the south, we do have a strip of commercial property. Although this is not shown in the future land use map, this is an area that will reflect general commercial, GC, when the future land use map amendment is approved. I believe there's an item later on tonight's agenda where we will be considering the amendment of the future land use map. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for the council to review the possibility of ordinance 4839. 4839 for the record.
Hi, may I have a question?
Go ahead.
What's the status of Lot 3?
Lot 3 is a property that the applicant would like to remain as-is, and in speaking to the applicant, the reason that she's elected not to rezone this property is because she also owns the parcel to the north. So, in the future, she does plan on doing something in the back, and this would be an access to the property to the back. This is an old area. It still kind of reflects what you see there. There's a used car business on the west side, and then the east side remains vacant. This was an area that was recently annexed by the city.
Hyman, how deep is that commercial zone?
The commercial rezoning is a little bit over 200 feet, closer to 300 feet, and the width of the lots is a little bit over 50 feet.
Okay.
Any other questions? I will entertain the motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion for approval of ordinance 4839, and second, and final discussion by any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Ordinance 4839 is approved. Mr. Acevedo, I'm calling for 1.1C, a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. 1.1C is a public hearing for rezoning of 2.0 acres, more or less, out of the north 10 acres, of the south 20 acres of Lot 183, John H. Cherry subdivision. The property is AOI currently, and the applicant is intending to rezone the property to R1T, Town Homes Residential. The applicant is Black Diamond Development, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September 26th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a third of a mile north of US Expressway 83 along the east side of Glasscock Road. The surrounding zones include AOI to the north and to the east. To the west, we do have single-family homes, and to the south, we also have a tract of land that is vacant, but is also zoned for single-family homes. The existing land uses are vacant to the north, east, and south. To the west, we do have a strip of residential homes along Glasscock. The future land use map does reflect this area as a general commercial area. Being with its proximity to Expressway 83, the future land use map does reflect this as a general commercial area. However, we have approved in recent, in the past few years, some R1Ts for townhomes along Glasscock. And they're a little bit further south, but they're within 300 or 400 feet of the proposed site. And if approved, the applicant will be constructing a single-family townhome lots. And there was no opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the townhomes. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to close this rezoning and open it for discussion for the council for possible ordinance 4840. Any questions?
I move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, or a final discussion by any of the council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. A motion carries. Ordinance 4840 is approved. Mr. Acevedo, calling for 1.1D.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for rezoning of Lot 1, Big Lake subdivision from AOP, Agricultural Open Permanent, to I1, Light Industrial. The applicant is Magic Valley Concrete LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October 9th, 2019, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter mile south of US Expressway 83 along the east side of Conway. The surrounding zones include Light Industrial to the north, east, and west. To the south, we do have some single-family homes and general commercial properties. The existing land uses are commercial to all directions with a row of single-family residences further south along the Melba Carter subdivision. The future land use map does reflect this area as a heavy commercial area. Thus, the proposal is consistent with the rezoning request. The owner, Mayor and Council, is Kappa, and this used to be a dry lake bed. Back in the 80s, when the expressway was being constructed, they removed dirt from this area to do the overpass along Conway, left a void there, and that void has recently been filled and is now no longer a dry lake bed. So, we're here to rezone it to Light Industrial, which is the surrounding zoning for the rest of the area. There was some opposition, however. Some of the residents from the Melba Carter subdivision further south did voice their concerns at the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, the applicant is here in the audience, and some of the concerns were cracking of the foundations, and we haven't seen that with the Pueblo Tyres, which is a lot closer to the operations. And given the proximity to the homes on Melba Carter, which is over 1,000 feet, we don't see it as a potential risk to the homes in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? Please, the podium, and--
Good afternoon, everybody.
Name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Hyman Sanchez, and I live at 4306 Canadian Lane in Mission, Texas, and I represent Kappa as an employee. And also during the proceedings of this application for rezoning, one of the things that I want to mention is that Kappa is receptive to, you know, city code requirements, so, you know, I'll try to answer any questions that the city council members, you know.
Is that it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If you're against, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and address, and that's for the record, and then your position, please.
My name's Sarah Nagasai. I live on 308 Melba Carter Street, south of that area where they want to rezone. I don't really recall them addressing the reason for rezoning from agriculture to light industrial. That was one of my questions, what exactly were their plans or future plans? Right now, I know they have amounts of, I don't know, dirt or rock or whatever. It is hazardous, not only for the foundation of our houses, but as health-wise issues. It is fine dust, pretty much. So, when the wind blows from the north, I mean, it does, we do get some of that dusty effect. It's from what I under, I know they don't, I mean, I don't see any control of them for the dust not take anything, any, for the dust not to go up. I mean, that's mainly, my concern is health-wise issues, concerns, as far as what is our long-term effects on our health, even though we're somewhat a little bit further out. But, you know, when we get the northern wind, some of the hazards that we might have, we might get. And as, you know, all these other ones that you all had-- And as, you know, all these other ones that you all had other rezonings before this one, there's no any citizens that are concerned for or against, but we are some of the citizens from Mission, Texas, that came to the meeting, so you all know that we are concerned for our health, how it affects us on our daily lives, just for you guys to consider.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Gloria Boca Negra. I live on three-oh-five Melba Carter Street. If you see the line under, like, underneath, my lot is right there. Like the lady right now that said that she wanted to plant ten trees for the environment where across the street of, for she wants to plant the trees. And I think it's a hazard that having all those chemicals already Googled, and it's not good for our health, and I'm against it. So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the rezoning? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any of the council members for any questions or any information that you need to make a decision. Go ahead.
I was just hoping to get a rebuttal from the representative in reference to those concerns.
I think she's requesting for you to say something about the citizens' concern about the dust in the air and their health issues.
We get monitored by Texas Environmental Commission of Quality. We've never had any bad marks as far as anything having to do with the environment. With that being said, I mean, as far as the amounts of dirt, we will relocate those accordingly. I mean, we're here, and we don't want to cause any harm whatsoever to the peaceful enjoyment of the residents around the area. We've been here, Kappa's been here for thirty-five-plus years, so that says a lot about, you know, why the company's there. It's just a matter of, you know, the customer, it's just grown so fast that, you know, we need the space to operate in a more, you know, convenient way for the company. But we don't want to cause any whatsoever detrimental damage to anybody around the facility. And again, I reinstated the fact that we don't have any bad record whatsoever with the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality or any other agency, state or city.
Thank you.
Any question by any council?
You do have all the locations, right?
Excuse me?
You do have all the locations?
Yes.
There are five plants including this one. This is the first plant in Mission. This is what helped Kappa to be where it is right now, and again, you know, that record speaks for itself.
Hyman, what type of fencing do we have around there?
We have about five-hundred feet of separation with some trees between the end of this property line and the nearest home to the south. There are some properties within those lots that do have homes more towards the middle, but the majority of them do have them along Melba Carter, which is about five-hundred-and-fifty feet south of that red line. One thing that I will say is that if you can see on this aerial on the north part, they're already existing within lot number one. What we're doing is, there was a request made by Kappa to expand their facility, and because the property was owned agriculture open permanent, we couldn't issue a building permit. So this request here today is to kind of fix things appropriately so that we could go ahead and issue a building permit for the addition of another cement mixing plant where the red arrow is pointing further north.
Okay, so, sir, can I ask you a question real quick? How are you?
Fine, thank you.
So you just mentioned a little while ago that you all would move the dirt. So you will not be having the dirt there, you're going to want to build it to continue services?
I'll provide my cellphone to whoever wants to get my cellphone to receive any complaints. I mean, I'm fully aware of any complaints need to be, you know, resolved to whatever, you know, extent they need to, you know. So again, we're just here trying to expand the business to accommodate the customer, you know, that we have. It's a growing company. We're, you know, it's growing real fast in this area, so we just want to expand and be able to operate without causing any harm to anybody around that area.
Go ahead.
I'd like to start with the noise. How about the noise?
From trucks? Do trucks go in and out of that?
The trucks mainly use, if you see, if you're looking at the north with that arrow coming down, you see that trail coming out?
Yeah.
That's one of the ingress and egress, and also when the line goes like this westbound, you'll see another trail going up. Those are the routes that our trucks take. They're, you know, far away from the residential area. Now, going back to, there was a concern about structural, you know, effects on buildings. There's no whatever heavy traffic circulating around that area close to the residential area on the south side, and as you can see, I mean, we do go in and out through that where that Pueblo Tyre is. I mean, there's no structural defects in that building whatsoever.
Any other questions? What's your wishes in the council?
I move to approve the request as presented.
We have a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
We have a second, and this would be ordinance forty-eight forty-one. I'll open it for final discussion for any of the council members. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance forty-eight forty-one is approved. I'm calling for 1.1 E.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1 E is a conditional use permit for, to place a twelve-by-twenty-six portable building for office use at eight-oh-one South Conway Boulevard, being lot one, Big Lake subdivision. The property is currently zoned Light Industrial, as per the change that just took place, and the applicant is Magic Valley Concrete LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located approximately a quarter-mile south of U S Expressway eighty-three along the east side of Conway Boulevard. The irregular twenty-two-point-sixteen-acre tract of land is the home of Kappa Concrete, and the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the installation of a portable twelve-by-twenty-six-foot building that will be used for office use. The applicant is proposing to install a new plant and would like the use of the portable building to be used as an office for the proposed concrete plant addition. The area is subdivided and has both water and sewer services for the proposed portable building. There was no public opposition during the P N Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the installation of a rock pit towards the entrance that they have off of Conway, and in case it's raining that the trucks don't leave any mud or debris on Conway Boulevard. We're also asking for evaluation after a twelve-month period and a flood elevation certificate. I will report that I did receive a certificate from the engineer that Kappa has engaged, so that part of the condition of approval is no longer needed. So staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1 E is now before you.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against a conditional use permit?
Again, good afternoon, and like Mr. Acevedo mentioned, you know, those requirements, Kappa is willing to comply with all of them as needed, and as whatever timeframe they're going to be requested, we will comply with them. And if I can answer any of the city council members' questions, you know, I'll try to do that.
Thank you.
Is that, do you want to put a portable building, and that...
Yes, and the purpose, the reason for this is because we're going to be upgrading, as you all know, with, you know, time and everything, you know, we need to do preventive maintenance and maintenance, so we're going to be upgrading our present plan, so we need this to back up some of the orders from the customers that we currently have and new ones for that same reason.
Any questions?
No, I was going to offer a motion if it was in order.
We're still on a public hearing.
Yes.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask for the council for any questions on the applicant or any other questions.
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. And this I open it for final discussion by any of the council members. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance forty-eight forty-two is approved.
Thank you very much on behalf of the, you know, Kappa owners and all the employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm calling for 1.1 F.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1 F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for four drive-through service windows at Snowball Express number two. This is at thirty-one twenty-four North Mayberry Road, being a one-point-two-seven-acre tract of land of the west three-hundred-and-ten, of the north two-hundred-and-twenty-four feet of lot twenty-eight-nine, west addition, shareland subdivision. The property is owned C two, and the applicant is Xavier Javier. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located the southeast corner of Mayberry and East Two-Mile Road. The most recent renewal for Snowball Express came in January the ninth, twenty-nineteen, at which time a six-month renewal was awarded with the hours of weekdays to ten P M. and weekends until midnight. The applicant has remained in operation even though his C U P expired on July twenty-eighth of two thousand and nineteen. In talking to the applicant, there was a family emergency, and he had to leave out of the country, so he's been in and out, and the operation has remained operating without an approved conditional use permit. I did receive a call from a attorney on this particular item, and the attorney wished that no action be taken on this item or that the item be tabled, so that he has a little bit of time to renew or review this conditional use permit request. The same request was made at the P N Z level, in which the applicant called me the night before wanting to take no action so that his attorney can review it. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission did not grant that, I guess, extension, and they acted and denied the request to have any of the drive-through windows in operation based on the fact that even though the conditions of approval have been set by the council on the Planning and Zoning Commission, they feel that the applicant has not followed with those conditions, and because of the noncompliance, they voted to deny the use of the drive-through windows at this particular site. There was one public opposition that was received by staff in opposition of this conditional use permit, and staff, the board recommended denial, and staff is also recommending denial, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1 F is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Please identify yourselves or name and address for the record and your position, sir.
Your Honor, I'm the person he referred to. My name is Leo Lada. I'm an attorney. I've been practicing law for thirty years in McAllen. The Honorable Jim Darling was my attorney. I was the chairman of the Housing Authority for seventeen years in McAllen. We did a great job, and I'm real proud of it. It has nothing to do with this here. I just got retained on Friday, Your Honor, on this case. The Honorable Alex Moreno had been part of this. This case has been up to court and back, and I looked at the pleadings that probably took. I see that there's a lot of misunderstanding, maybe miscommunication. The gentleman is of Indian origin, and he has a particular niche that he's found in his business, and that is, the longer he stays open, the more profitable it becomes. He catches the people that are out after ten o'clock and so on and so forth, and that's when he starts making his money, and of course, he's in, that has been, I don't know, maybe one of the major problems with the problem. But in my particular problem is just catching up. I did have a discussion with Mr. Acevedo this morning. I understand the city ordinances. I've been around the city, you know, a long time, worked with the city. All I'm asking the court, maybe to table this matter, give us, give me a chance to talk to Mr. Acevedo, try to see if I can work with Mr. Elgin, who's the owner of these properties. I think there's a misunderstanding of what needs to happen. Certainly, you have the authority to do what you need to do to protect the public, and you certainly have the authority to make decisions about conditional use permits, and I'm not here to do that. I'd like an opportunity to work with the man, to help him. The drive-through windows are very profitable for him. He needs them open. He feels that maybe, I don't know, by dragging his feet or whatever, but I'd like to have an opportunity, this board, this honorable city commissioner, give me a chance to work with him and see if we can come, we're working with Mr. Acevedo, to something that, so I'm not sure if I'm for or against it. I don't want you to deny it. I'm not sure how that works, but I'd like for you to give me some more time, maybe hold off on making a decision. That's my comments, Your Honor.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to open it for any of the council members for any discussions or any motion either to table or to continue with the process.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go with city staff and our planning and zoning board to deny the request.
We have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. This I open it for further discussion for any of the council persons. Mr. Reddick, I think you were going to say something. Now we're in discussion mode, you can be able to...
I was just going to second, but...
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the ordinance is denied. Under the conditional use permit.
I'm also going to point out, Mayor Council, that the other particular site that Mr. Xavier also owns and operates on four-ninety-five is also with an expired conditional use permit at this time.
So, Mayor, if I could say a few words. I honestly think that our planning and zoning with your staff, and we need to go through and enforce the city ordinance that we have in our city, and I think that if we set a certain time for things to be closed, it needs to be fair across the board with every single business that we have operating like this, and if they don't have a permit, they shouldn't be operating.
Since this activity is happening after hours, we are getting the help from our local P D., and we are going out there and issuing citations to the owner.
Thank you.
We do have an ordinance, and my take is, if we have an ordinance, enforce it, staff. Open it for 1.1 G.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1 G is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal. This is to keep a portable building for an auto sales office at fourteen-eighteen East Business Highway eighty-three. This is lot one of Lemon Tree Plaza subdivision. The property is owned C three, and the operator is Jay Sanchez Motors and care of George Sanchez. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Lemon Tree and Business Highway eighty-three. This C U P was initially approved on February thirteenth of two thousand and seventeen. However, the applicant did not open until September of two thousand and eighteen and is up for reconsideration at this time. The applicant operates a used auto sales and uses a portable building. This can be seen there on the picture as his office. When this item was initially approved, it was approved under the understanding that eventually any portable use or any portable... eventually any portable use or any portable building that's being used for commercial would ultimately build a site built on the location. Speaking to the applicant, he was receptive to building something within six months. So, what the Planning and Zoning Commission approved was a revaluation of this particular conditional use permit for another six-month period, at which time the applicant will have to come in for a building permit for a site-built office. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval, staff is recommending approval for a six-month period or once the permanent structure is constructed that the C U P cease at that particular time. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing, item one point one G is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal?
Mayor, excuse me, for the record, I do have an affidavit of substantial interest from Councilman Vela, so he will be abstaining from this item.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna be closing the public hearing and open it for discussion for the three council members and myself.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second and be ordinance forty-eight, forty-three, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor.
And this I open it for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion recorded and for the record, Mr. Vela did not vote or participate. One point one H.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one H is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Hall's Sports Bar and Grill. This is at eighteen-ten West Griffin Parkway Suites B, C, and D of lot seven and eight of Inspiration Point subdivision. The property is owned C three and Hall's Sports Bar and Grill in care of Letizia Ramirez is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located three hundred feet west of the northwest corner of Inspiration and Griffin Parkway. The sports bar has been in operation since two thousand and fourteen and there were no incidents to be reported from this particular site. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from eleven A M. to twelve A M. A total of five employees manned the operation. The applicant does have a full bar in section one point five-six, three A, states that bars must be at least three hundred feet from the nearest residence. There's an existing residential subdivision located just north of this particular site. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval subject to the waiver of the three hundred-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhood and that the C U P be approved for a period between now and December fourth of two thousand and twenty, at which time the applicant will have to renew their T A B C license and conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, item one point one H is now before you.
This is a public hearing, all those in favor or against conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and I'm gonna open it for any discussion by any of the city council members.
I move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and this I open it for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight, forty-four is approved, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we're opening one point one I.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one I is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. This is also a renewal for the Pizza Hut number thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventeen at twenty-two seventeen East Griffin Parkway being lots one of R G V Pizza Hut subdivision. The property is owned C three, General Commercial, and Muy Pizza Tejas LLC is the applicant. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located along the north side of Griffin Parkway between Citrus and Glasscock Road. There was no public opposition. The existing pizzeria has been here since two thousand and two, however, most recently there was new ownership in two thousand and seventeen and a conditional use permit was issued in two thousand and seventeen on September the twenty-fifth and we are here today to reconsider the renewal of that conditional use permit. The Pizza Hut only offers beer, there is no liquor or mixed drinks that are served. The hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from eleven A M. to midnight and Friday through Saturday from eleven A M. to one A M. A total of twenty-nine employees manned the operation, parking and landscaping are existing and do meet code at this particular site. There was no opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval, staff and city manager are recommending approval for a period between now through March twenty twenty, at which time the applicant will have to renew their T A B C license and conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, item one point one I is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and open it for any discussion by any of the council members.
I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
You mentioned that the permit is only valid till March twenty twenty?
Yeah, one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to keep them in line with their T A B C license, their T A B C license is good for twenty-four months, so we're trying to keep them in line, being that this one will be approved in March, what we're doing is we're not charging them for the conditional use permit at that time because of the short period, it's like five months away.
Right.
So, when they do come in, we'll accomplish two things, we'll keep it in line with their T A B C license, but we will not charge them for the additional conditional use permit.
Would it be in order to just give them the permit for, until twenty twenty-two? I mean, it's just two years and five months.
That's something that can be considered.
Okay, that would be my motion, Mayor.
You are amending the motion to include the permit till twenty twenty-two?
Yes, March twenty twenty-two.
Do I hear a second to her motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance forty-eight, forty-five to include the permit for twenty twenty-two. Any discussion under that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, amendment has been approved, so now ordinance forty-eight, forty-five, we have up to twenty twenty-two. And this I open it for, I entertain the motion to approve ordinance forty-eight, forty-five.
So moved.
We have a motion and we have a second final discussion by any of the city council members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight, forty-five is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for one point one J.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one J is a public hearing for a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Brick Fire Pizza. This is at seven oh-four East Griffin Parkway Suite one thirty. This is a twelve-point-five acre tract out of lot twenty-four dash eight, West Edition and Share Land Subdivision, the property is owned C three, Brick Fire Pizza and More LLC in care of Steven Alanis is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located within a commercial plaza between Mayberry Avenue and Augusta along the south side of Griffin Parkway. The applicant has been in operation since September twenty seventeen at this location and is requesting reconsideration of their C U P for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages. They do sell beer and wine and at this pizzeria, the hours of operation are Monday through Wednesday from eleven A M. to eleven P M., Thursday and Saturday from eleven A M. to two A M. and then Sunday from eleven A M. to seven P M. A total of five employees manned the operation during any given shift and it is noted that parking is held in common with the, another business that's on the particular site, but the other business is like an eight-to-five type of business, so parking hasn't been an issue and the applicant also owns the other business, which is a home health agency, I believe. There was no public opposition during the P and Z, the board unanimously recommended approval, staff and city manager are recommending approval subject to the waiver of the three hundred-foot separation requirement from the residential neighborhood to the south and that the conditional use permit be approved for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their T A B C license and conditional use permit. This is a public hearing, item one point one J is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and open it for any discussion by any of the council members.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-eight, forty-six. And this final discussion by any of the council member? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight, forty-six is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for one point one K.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one K is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Los Pescadores Restaurant. This is at six oh-one East Ninth Street, Suite A, which is lot four through eight of Block one sixty-five of the Amish Mission original townsite. The property is owned C three and Los Pescadores in care of El Azar Savala is the applicant. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located at the northeast area of Business Highway eighty-three and Saint Marie. The C U P was originally awarded in two thousand and nine and most recently received a three-year approval on September twelfth of two thousand and sixteen. Hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from eleven A M. to ten P M. and a total of five employees manned the operation. There was no public opposition during the P and Z meeting, the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff and city manager are recommending approval for a period between now and November twenty-two of two thousand and twenty, at which time their T A B C license will be renewed and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval, this is a public hearing, item one point one K is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor to the conditional use permit renewal, in favor or against? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and I'm gonna open it for any of the council members for any discussion or question.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve ordinance forty-eight, forty-seven?
Second.
And a second, further discussion by any of the council members? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight, forty-seven is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for one point one L, is that a public hearing also?
Yes.
One point one L?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one L is a public hearing for discussion and action to amend the future land use map. If the council is inclined to amend the future land use map, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On August nineteenth of two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council held a joint workshop to consider amending the current future land use map. The changes that were considered would reflect what's currently on the properties that were given on your particular packets. All of the changes that were discussed at that workshop were considered and those changes are reflecting on the exhibits that were provided with this particular agenda packet. Based on the workshop, there were significant changes to all areas of town. There was a lot of discussion and consideration given at that particular meeting by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council and what you see here today is what was expressed at that meeting and what was considered at that meeting. This future land use map had not been revised since two thousand, so it was long due for reconsideration. And there was no public opposition during the previous P and Z meeting where this item was considered, the board unanimously recommended approval, staff recommends approval of the amendment of the future land use map as presented, our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing, item one point one L is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the action to be taken on the amendment on the future land use map? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or would like to mention anything against the action to amend the future land use map? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the discussion and action to amend the future land use map? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm gonna close this public hearing and I'm gonna open it for the council members to give the final discussion on the amendment to the future land map.
I move to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance forty-eight, forty-eight. And this I will have a final discussion for any of the council members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, ordinance forty-eight, forty-eight is approved, Mr. Acevedo, and I'm calling for one point one M as a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, item one point one M is a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend section one point three-seven-one dash three-one of the zoning ordinance number one-one-two-eight, as amended to include duplex or triplex under R one's conditional uses. And if the council is inclined to approve this amendment, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On October ninth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider amending the R one single-family residential district. Under the single-family R one residential district, conditional uses is limited to only single-family residences. A proposal was made to consider allowing a duplex or a triplex in the downtown area, also known as the Amish original townsite. Mayor and Council, the way that this came about was, there was a rezoning request that was recently heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission in September of two thousand and nineteen and one of the arguments that the property owner had for the denial of the R two, they did propose a rezoning from R one to R two and staff was inclined to deny the request. We felt that this was an area that in two thousand and six was amended by the city council. It was originally R two and it was rezoned through a mass rezoning to R one. However, the applicant at that time said, well, if I don't get a rezoning or if I don't get some type of consideration for multifamily, I'm just not gonna build anything. So, the council members or the Planning and Zoning Commission members told me, I mean, would you rather than not build anything or would you rather than build something? And my answer to them was, there were some concerns about density issues in the area. So, I said, if anything, I would consider a duplex at the most because that would still address the wishes of the council somewhat and it would also give them the flexibility of building two units instead of one. And it's not as dense as a triplex or a fourplex. And they liked the idea and they wanted to bring it back as a form of a conditional use permit to keep the zoning as is, but to allow property owners within the area that's known as the Amish original townsite to be allowed to build a duplex or a triplex. I'm recommending a duplex, not a triplex because of the density issue and I'm also imposing the following conditions, that it must be on a corner lot or it must be adjacent to existing duplex or triplex or fourplex and that the vacant, a vacant lot cannot be between two residential homes. And we're also recommending that they cannot buy a single-family home with the intentions of demolishing it and getting a conditional use permit for a duplex or triplex. The Planning and Zoning Commission did favor up to a triplex, however, I'm recommending denial of such consideration and limiting only to a duplex. Our city manager is seeking council direction on this particular matter. This is a public hearing, item one point one M is now before you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this amendment to the conditional uses? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the changes to the conditional uses? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the conditional usage of this ordinance? I'm gonna close the public hearing because I don't see anybody... I'm going to close the public hearing, because I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm closing the public hearing and asking the council for a discussion, and then I'll give my take after that.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Hi, Mayor. Where is this exactly? The address?
The old townsite is between Bryan and Holland, between First Street and 13th Street. It all used to be zoned pretty much R2. So you do have a lot of areas where there's a lot of duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, but you also have a lot of areas that are single-family homes. Add to the mix that if you take a drive in the old townsite, you still find a lot of vacant lots.
Yes.
So there's a lot of vacant lots in the area, and that's why it's a tough decision. Do we allow them to build something on those vacant lots, or do we keep them as vacant lots? Because a lot of people don't want to build where there's already apartments.
And are the owners here?
I did have a lot of opposition and people in favor. It was like a split, 50/50 at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Who are the owners of this property?
It varies. It varies. We're talking about a big chunk.
We're talking about an ordinance change.
Oh, yeah.
Not a specific.
But none of them are here.
This is not specific to one person. This would affect everybody in the original.
In that area?
Yeah.
So I guess the question would be if we want to continue to either just have the land there, if they want to build future homes, or we're going to allow for them to build, like, apartments and duplexes in that area?
Correct.
Okay, and so have you done some type of survey, or if families or constituents here in Mission would rather start with these type of homes, and maybe we don't have enough in Mission?
One of the, I mean, at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we had several people, and I'm surprised that nobody showed up for this particular hearing here today. We did have a group of about four or five individuals against it, and we had a group of about two or three people again, I mean, for it. So it was kind of split down the middle. There was a lot of, the cons, I guess, is the density. They're not homeowners, they're renters, they might not care for the property. But then on the flip side, there's a lot of property owners that have vacant lands that are willing and ready to start building something. There was a particular gentleman that had two corner lots, who said that this would help him and this would launch him to build something. But otherwise, he said he wasn't going to build a single-family home. So this is a touchy, touchy little subject here, because it is going to impact a lot of people.
I know that I've been approached also about the triplex. That's why duplex or triplex. Because there's some owners of the properties that have come to me and say, "Now, I want to be able to live in one apartment and rent the other two." You know, because the duplex part is, you know, they live in one apartment and go to another apartment, they only get the chance to rent one.
Yeah.
But they don't have enough, they don't even have enough money to be able to do the fourplex, you know? So they wanted that option to do the triplex, so they could live in one and rent the other two.
And Mr. Carlos Garza is an engineer on another item, and he was at that meeting previously, and he did state that his father would be interested in such consideration, so that he can rent one and live in the other one.
And I've gotten the 50/50 also, against and in favor, you know? As far as that is concerned, but the other side of the coin, if we don't take any action, the empty lots are going to be there, and they're going to continue to be there, and they've been there for years already, you know? Well, so, council, what do we want?
So your recommendation is to go for duplexes instead of triplex?
That's my recommendation, to keep it as, to keep the density down.
Yeah, but the Planning and Zoning approved duplex and triplex, or triplex. So it's, we have three recommendations here. One by the Planning and Zoning, and that recommended the approval of the duplex or triplex, and then Mr. Jaime changed that, because according to here, it says staff recommended approval. You know, so he's saying that he wants for only to be duplex.
To be duplex, yeah. To address the concerns of.
Yeah.
Also, Mayor, the Planning and Zoning also recommended case-by-case basis. If you go that way, then you're not really affecting the ordinance, so that you'd be expiring every time.
So it'd be case-by-case basis?
And that didn't mention the case-by-case basis, because in essence, a conditional use permit hearing is heard on a case-by-case basis, so it's already assumed that it's going to be on a case-by-case basis.
Well, I like the case-by-case, Ben. You know, I like that part, you know, because that means that everybody has to come again and see, because when you mentioned about the residents, the residents coming in and not caring and all that, you know, I don't want to put Mr. Garza here on the spot, but I know, I know his family will take, will do, adjust to the apartment complex that they do, whether it be a duplex or a triplex, you know? They'll keep it up and maintain it, and that's what we're looking for, is to be able to maintain it and look at pretty, 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 and still have, still have the growth that we're looking for, to be able to, on 2020, be able to go over 100,000 people here in Mission, you know?
Sure.
The chair recognizes you, Mr. Osavero, as a.
Carlos Garza with AEC Engineering. General, I grew up here in Mission, and my parents, when they bought, they bought two lots in the subdivision. Now it's all in field in the subdivision, there's a vacant lot, which was our playground. I mean, that's when my, you know, when my dad bought that lot. Now that they're getting older, we've talked about building a duplex on that vacant lot and renting their current home, and then leaving in one apartment, and the other one renting it. And so in regards to duplex, I see it as a benefit for the duplex. The triplex, unless you get further into, limiting into one-bedroom triplex apartments only, because then you get into the issue of two-bedroom, so you got six bedrooms, two adults, six cars, in a small lot, gets kind of, you know, congested. But I was at that P&amp;Z meeting, and Mr. Osavero mentioned, so during the public comments, I did make that comment, that my brothers and I have discussed that in the future. So if that is available to the city as a citizen, I would be very interested in it.
Thank you, Mr. Osavero.
Thank you.
Unless any, any councils have a specific question for Mr. Osavero directly?
Mr. Garza?
Yes.
I have a question for him.
Okay.
But I would like to comment that I'm not necessarily in favor of this, of this ordinance, but I am willing to give in a little and go with a duplex. I think a triplex would be too dense. These, most of these lots are, small lots are usually 50 by 100.
Correct.
And I think that two units on a 50 by 100 lot is plenty.
Do you want to put that into a formal motion?
Okay. We will move that we amend Section 1.371-3 to include a duplex under the R1 zone with a conditional use permit.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, and before I ask for discussion, I need legal to, legal, we need four fifths and five fifths, or majority, general majority will do if we're changing to just the duplex.
Majority, but they were passing that, so you're passing the will of the planning and zoning.
The will of the planning and zoning is duplex or triplex.
Or.
So we got duplex.
So essentially, given the council.
But or triplex to be under ordinance. And Ms. Garza is saying that.
To a duplex.
So it'd be four fifths, we need four fifths or five fifths, right? Because technically speaking, we're changing the recommendation of the.
I would argue just a simple majority, but you want to go four fifths, then certainly it's better.
Okay.
It's better.
Is there open for discussion by any of the council members?
I mean, the duplex is fine, because I think that the triplex, unless it's a big lot, the parking will be bad.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4849 will be adjusted to indicate additional duplex under R1 conditional uses and eliminate the triplex. Thank you, Mr. Osavero. That ends our public hearings, and I move to agenda item 2.0, consent agenda items. I want to let the council know that, that any of the agenda items here can be pulled by any of the council member. All you got to do is give me the number of 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5 as resolution 1619, 2.6, and 2.7 for consent agenda item. Any questions?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second to approve the consent agenda items as presented, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, and 2.7. Open it for discussion by any of the other members. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda item is approved. 3.0 approval and authorization. I'm calling for 3.1, Mr. Osavero.
Excuse me, Mayor. On consent agenda, we also have resolution number 1619.
Yes. 2.5 resolution approved, 1619. Thank you for the record.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.1 is a final plat approval of Las Comadres Number 5 subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of a 45-acre tract of land being all of lots 19, 20, 21, and 22, and the north half of Lot 23, Block 3 of Texas Garden subdivision. This is in our rural ETJ area. The developers, Carlos G. Leal Jr., and the engineers, Melvin and Hunt. The property is located about one-tenth of a mile south of Mile 4 Road along the west side of Texas Avenue. The applicant is proposing 76 residential lots, all half-acre in size or more, and they will be on septic tanks. The, we also note that Awasad will be providing water services for these particular lots, and the streets will be done to the specifications of the county. This does have filling stations as far as protection, or fire protection, where the trucks can be refilled in case of a fire. Staff is recommending approval of this 76-lot subdivision, as is our city manager. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion, and I have one question. The drainage.
A drainage. This one is, the drainage is being accomplished by the use of a drainage, onsite drainage facility that the County of Hidalgo has in the area. This is a calichera, Mayor. It used to be an old calichera. That's where the county is draining into.
Okay.
So there is onsite drainage.
Does anybody else, any other council person has a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.1. They're calling for 3.2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.2 is a preliminary and final plat approval of Glasscock Hills subdivision, being a 19.74-acre tract of land comprised of the south half of Lot 262, John H. Sherry subdivision, and a 1.10-acre tract out of a certain second tract lying adjacent to Lot 262, being 3.75 acres. The property is owned R1. The developer is Miguel Brito, and Ace Engineering LLC is the engineer. The property is located approximately a quarter-mile north of Griffin Parkway FM 495 along the west side of Glasscock Road. 91 single-family residential lots are being proposed, all with city of Mission water and sewer. With regards to drainage, the developer is proposing storm that will drain into an existing unnamed drainage just west of the property that will eventually lead north and go to the Mission lateral. Staff and city manager recommending approval, subject to the payment of the sewer capital recovery fees, which are $200 per lot, times 91 lots is $18,200, the dedication of water rights, the payment of park fees, which are imposed at $500 per lot, and that they provide with the street lighting plan to be reviewed by staff for the subdivision, while also requesting five-foot sidewalks along Glasscock Road and compliance with other, with the model subdivision rules. Staff and city manager recommending approval. Item 3.2 is now before you.
Do I hear a motion?
I have a question.
Let's have the motion on the floor first and then discussion.
Can I please ask the question?
Okay, I'll open it for, yes.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor, I'm noticing that we're doing a preliminary and final?
I'm sorry, this is, this should be preliminary.
Just, okay.
Yes.
So that's important.
Correct.
So for the record, let it stand corrected, sir?
It's preliminary plat approval. The final one will not come until the subdivision is complete and ready to be recorded.
All right, so then that being the case, I move for approval of the preliminary plat as presented.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve the, this preliminary approval of this 3.2. I have a question, Mr., and more to engineer, on that unnamed ditch. Can you give it a name, please? Because we're, because.
If the city, if the city suggests a name, we'll be more than happy to name it. It's just an unnamed section.
The thing about it, the thing that we're finding out is that we're collecting all the drainage ditches together, and we have a lot of them unnamed, so maybe you could use your subdivision name to name it, just for the sake of the record, so.
The city so chooses to.
Our drainage committee will be able to, instead of having seven unnamed ditches, you know, you can have, and it'll give us also the location of the ditch.
Yes, Mayor, and if the city, if staff, it's okay, we call it the Glasscock Hills ditch.
That'd be great.
We'll be okay with that. That's not a problem, of course.
Yes, and maybe we need to, from now on.
To name them all, Mayor? There are several out there that don't have.
Go back to the ones that we have not unnamed, that have unnamed ones, but let's wait till we get the preliminary study in January from how many unnamed ditches we have, you know, and the new ones that are coming in, if we could. Thank you, Mr.
We are, we are dedicating those 100 feet to the, to the city of Mission, and we are excavating that ditch, the necessary volume that we have for our development. There is additional capacity on that ditch in regards to land that can be excavated. We have went back and forth with staff in regards to whether we could get a variance in, in exchange kind of for the sewer recovery fees and all that, but city engineer and staff, you know, felt that currently, I think the city's working with another engineering firm and through a federal grant program to wind some ditches, and I think this is one of those where they opted to us not do the work and, and keep up with the, with the credits, if you want to call them that. So we're, we are excavating where it's our requirement, but we are deeding that land, which my clients purchased, and we are deeding those 100 feet to the city.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Is this the land that they purchased from the city?
It includes the land that was purchased from the city, or it's in the process of being purchased to the south.
Did we get it?
This is the land that started the whole conversation. But, I mean, I really, at this point, we just want to move forward with the subdivision. This is the land that we purchased, I say we, my client purchased, and we had the city's land on the south side. That's the land that we were hoping that we would do a trade. However, we've, we've come and settled with the, with the land on the south side, and we're just going to deed this land over to the city on the west side.
Again, thank you. Any other questions?
And if I may, Mayor, it's subject to them purchasing the property.
Did we get an appraisal?
Yes.
Yes, we did. The others were not requested, we, the council asked for.
And he is ready, Mayor.
Huh?
And he is prepared and ready for your decision.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2 is approved, Mr. Osavero. 3.3?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 3.3 is authorization to award the bid for the Weedy Lot Abatement. We did receive four bid responses, and at this time, we're recommending to award the bid to three of the four responses, and those are TDL, TDL Properties LLC, OCL Enterprises LLC, and Condes Landscaping. I will note that Condes Landscaping and OCL Enterprises LLC are currently two of the vendors that have been doing the landscaping services for the past three years for the city. Staff and city manager are recommending approval of these top three responsible bidders. Item 3.3 is now before you.
What is, what is the council?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.3. Open it for discussion. No discussion.
Hi, Mayor, I have a question. So you would be on a rotating basis? Because here I see that they're all charging differently. How would that work?
They all charge differently. The way that we do it now is that we, we split the work accordingly. We divide it down the middle into two. We would continue to do the same thing, divide it into three.
Okay, but I have a question for purchasing. Is he here? How would that be? Because if one is saying that they're going to charge 75, and the other one's 80, I think that we need to speak to all of them, and it needs to be the same across the board. They all need to agree to pay the same price.
In the solicitation, we allowed for multiple awards to lowest responsible, responsive responsible bidder per line item. That's what he's recommending for award, that's why.
So it's per line item?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Any other question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the 3.3 is authorized. 3.4, Mr. Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have before you item 3.4, which is the award to, for the purchase and delivery of decomposed granite. The city of Mission accepted and opened three bid responses. Call Your Materials, Inc., of Modern Falls, Texas, was the lowest responsible, and, lowest responsive and responsible bidder in meeting our specifications at a total cost of 16,080. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, 3.4, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.4 is approved, Mr. Benson, 3.5.
3.5 is as change order number one for the Mission Tennis Center at Birdwell Park. This is due to the removal of various portions of the tennis court construction, which included shade structures for bleacher area from the contract at a savings of $45,000. This we did in-house. Corrugated structure, corrugated concrete spillway at a savings of $6,500. City engineer felt that it was not needed at this time. Utility adjustment at a savings of $10,000. This is considered a contingency, provided in case it is needed for utility adjustments. There's a savings of $24,500 of the $30,000 allowable for the contingency fund. Of that, $5,500 was spent for the provision of stitched holes for the passing of wind through our shade, through our wind blocks. There's a net decrease in the change rate of $86,000. This is for the contracted price of $1,901,700 at a savings of 4.5% to the city. The total contract price now is $1,815,700. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Mayor, I have a question.
All, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
When are the beautiful tennis courts going to be ready?
Right now, we have a tentative date of the Mon, excuse me, the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yeah.
I've been getting a lot of calls about that, they want to go play.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Calling for 3.6, Ms. Bella.
Item 3.6 is approval of the attached budget amendment in the general fund. This is a reclassification of $1,000 from the repair and machinery line item to capital outlay within the fire department for the purchase of a washer and a dryer. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve, I just want to make sure that, so you reclassifying from one, because you don't have a number two.
To another, so no increase, yeah, it's just reclassification.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, with, any further discussion, any other questions? Who is your question answer, Mr. Plata?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.6.
Thank you.
3.7, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members, I come before you, seeking authorization to award bids for chlorine gas for the Public Works Department North and South Water Tree and Plant. The city of Mission has accepted and opened two bid responses for chlorine gas chemical. Staff recommendations to award bid to DPC Industries, Inc., who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting our specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year base term. The cost of the chemical measure is $789 per ton, per container, and the full fiscal year will be approximately $150,000 of a purchase. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve, 3.7. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.8, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir, Mayor, City Council members, item 3.8 is the authorization to award bids, bless you, for powder activated carbon for the North and South Water Tree and Plant. The city has accepted and opened four bid responses for powder activated carbon. Staff recommendation is to award bid to Denial Carbon US LLC, who is the lowest responsible bidder meeting our specifications. Again, recommendations is based solely on estimated quantities, and order will be placed on an as-needed basis throughout the one-year term. The cost of this chemical measure is .599 cents per pound. Total between the two plans will be of $75 for the full year term. Mayor, uh, city manager and staff recommend approval to award bid to Denial Carbon US LLC.
Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.8 is approved, 3.9, Mr. Rocha.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 3.9 is authorization to purchase via state-approved contract from Baker &amp; Taylor for library material. We'd like to purchase $40,000 worth of library materials from Baker &amp; Taylor. They are in the state co-op contract 715-M2. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, 3.9.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.9 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rocha.
Sorry, it's a long night.
3.10, Mr. Chief Dominguez, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 3.10 is authorization to enter into a contract with Carlos Ortega on for municipal court prosecution services for the city of Mission. Carlos Ortega on has provided prosecution services since 2014. This contract will clarify the scope of work and other contractual terms, and extend the term of the contract to October of 2020. The cost of the contract is $54,300. Staff and city manager recommend approval. And he is here, if you have any questions.
This is a renewal?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.10 is approved, Chief Dominguez, 3.11.
Mayor of City Council, item 3.11 is authorization to enter into a contract between the city of Mission and SafeTrack LLC DBA Safe Global Services to provide professional services. SafeTrack LLC DBA's Safe Global Service will retain, be retained for the specific purpose of providing security measures along the Mission-Texas-Mexico border. SafeTrack LLC Global Services will provide a number of security and intelligence services to the city of Mission as it relates to our proximity to the U.S.-Mexican border and the need to be aware of any potential threats to our international bridge, our border, and our community. The contract will provide for indemnification as requested by city council. The total amount of the yearly contract is $15,600. Staff and city manager recommend approval. Mr. Sisnetos is here as well today, if you have any questions. And the amount of the contract, I talked to him, and he dropped it from 1,700 a month to 1,300 a month.
Mayor, I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve, 3.11, and this, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.11 is approved, Chief Dominguez, 3.12.
Item 3.12 is authorization to enter into a contract between the city of Mission and Mary Ann Perales to serve as our technical supervisor for alcohol breath test program services. Ms. Mary Ann Perales DBA is a sole-source vendor for breath test services in Hidalgo, Willising, Cameron, Kansas. It is a responsibility of Mrs. Perales to assume, assure the operation of our entoxylizer 9,000 for the use by Mission police officers who are tasked with testing persons arrested for the offense of driving while intoxicated. The total amount of the yearly contract is $11,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is this a renewal?
Yes.
I move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.12 is approved, chief, 3.13.
3.13 is an interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Peñitas to provide temporary housing for prisoners. The interlocal is the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. The Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding cells for prisoners of the Peñitas Police Department, subject to the availability of space based on facility capacities. The temporary housing of prisoners will be at a cost of $54 per prisoner per day. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year, commencing on October the 1st of 2019, and ending at midnight on September 30th of 2020. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Is this how much we're charging right now?
Yes, as you know, we started these contracts with both the city of Peñitas and the city of Palmhurst yesterday, I mean, I'm sorry, yesterday, last year, for the first time, and this will be the renewal. I talked to both chiefs, Chief Vermae and Chief Fella, and obviously, they're willing to continue with the contracts.
Chief, Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Do you recall how much it is that we received, and does that go to the general fund, or do you use it?
No, it goes back to the general fund, we, we don't use it, no.
And city of Palmhurst, how many prisoners, or what was the, per year, how much was it, do you recall?
I don't, I don't recall right offhand, I don't know, Angie, if...
I, I would ask you to come back, chief, with that data.
Yes, I don't know right offhand.
I wouldn't ask that kind of data off the head.
Why?
Because you don't expect him to carry that information in his head.
It's a line item, why not?
On Palmhurst?
It's for, okay, well, for Peñitas. How much did they pay, or is this the first time ever?
For, for the year, I, I can't tell you, to be honest with you, ma'am, I don't know how many prisoners they brought in.
Okay, but I mean, that...
My, my staff, obviously, our records section records the number of prisoners that come in for the month, they're given to my secretary, my secretary invoices them. But I'll get you those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
I like to work with our neighbors, but I think $54 is a big liability for us for one, for division, but it's okay.
But that's why I wanted to know how much in total it was, if it's anything, like, does that burden our jails, I know, I understand helping our fellow communities, but also...
Well, the understanding with them is this, that once you bring them to the facility, you have 24 hours to remove them. So, obviously, usually a prisoner is brought any, usually in the evening hours or early morning hours, the next day, the investigator types out all the arraignment paperwork and gets arraigned by the judge, so really, they're in and out of a facility. So, within 24 hours, they're, they're in and out.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, and open it for further discussion, any other council person? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.13 is approved, chief, and 3.14.
3.14 is authorization to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and the city of Palmhurst to provide temporary housing for prisoners. Interlocal is the temporary housing and detention of prisoners awaiting arraignment. Again, the Mission Police Department agrees to make use of their holding cells for prisoners of Palmhurst Police Department, subject to availability of space based on facility capacity. The temporary housing of prisoners will be at a cost, again, of $54 per prisoner per day. The cost includes detention, transportation, and meal costs. The term of the agreement is for one year, commencing on October 1st and ending at midnight on September 30th, 2020. Staff and city manager recommend approval. One clarification, and I know council had questions last time on transportation. Transportation, just in case they get sick in the facility, and they have to be transported to the local hospital, whether it's Mission Regional or the standalone hospital.
So, there's no transportation back to the county jail if it's after the arraignment?
No. They actually pick them up in the facility, take them to, back to their city, get arraigned there, and they transport them to the county jail.
Mayor, I move to approve, item 3.14.
We have a motion and, do I hear a second? And we have a second, and for discussion, chief, make sure that you provide the information to council, to the councilmen and the next...
Yes, yes, sir, I will.
Under, under report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.14 is approved, chief, and 3.15.
3.15 is authorization to accept the FY 2019 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the Office of Justice Program Bureau of Justice Assistance. The BJ grant will allow the Mission Police Department the opportunity to purchase a total of 37 bulletproof vests. The total grand award is $46,828.50. The grant will pay for half of the bulletproof vest cost, $23,414.25, and the city of Mission Police Department will be responsible for the second half of $23,414.25. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Mayor, I'm second.
We have a motion and a second, and I have a question, funding source for the $23,000, your funding source, general fund?
Is, is through the city of Mission General Counsel.
General Counsel, okay. And it's in the budget, right?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions or anything?
No, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.15 is approved, chief, and 3.16.
3.16 is authorization to purchase duty pistol ammunition, duty rifle ammunition, training ammunition supplies for the FY 2019-2020 for the Mission Police Department via state-approved contract. The purchase will be from GT distributors, the purchase will be used to, again, purchase a pistol and long rifle duty and training ammunition. Order will also include items required for maintenance of the department issued weapons. The total cost is $14,760.34. This is through buyboard contract 524-17. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.16 is approved, chief, 3.17 is called.
Item 3.17 is authorization to enter into an amendment with Tyler Technologies, Inc., a sole-source vendor, for an upgrade to our standard software license and service agreement. The Mission Police Department has been in partnership with new assistance now known as Tyler Technologies since December of 1991. Our organization is in need of upgrading our software and our service agreement. The total expenditure for this project is 611,745. The first year payment of $338,757.24 will be paid through our NIBRIS grant award from the Office of the Governor. The remaining amount of $272,987.60 will be paid over a three-year period commencing October 1st of the year 2020. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion, open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.17 is approved, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. 3.18, Mr. Bilmatris.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item 3.18, authorization to award beer, wine, and liquor for resale at the Mission Event Center in Sherry Municipal Golf Course. Purchase of beer, wine, and liquor for resale would be a bold location by, we would purchase through Glazer Beer and Beverage, LNF Distributors, Holiday Wine and Liquor and Filaments Market Center through September 30th, 2020. As protected local government code, this is a general exemption. Goods purchased by municipality for subsequent retail sold by the municipality, the goods required by the Mission Event Center and Sherry Municipal Golf Course are exempt from the procurement process. Mission Event Center budgets not to exceed $37,000, and the Sherry Municipal Golf Course $35,617.44. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, 3.18, this is open for further discussion. Questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, 3.18 is approved. 3.19, Mr. Bilmatris.
3.19, approval of training services agreement with Berta Perez Consulting, Consultant, is to perform consultation services regarding training and post-training support and implementation of city of Mission intervention system. COMES, the city of Mission intervention system is designed to establish the foundation systems, actions, and processes to support continuous improvement for the city of Mission. The term of the agreement includes first-year participant training, second-year participant training, and city council workshops.
training, and city council workshops, marked goal training, in the amount of forty thousand dollars. Staff is seeking direction from council.
Move for approval, mayor?
We have a motion to approve three point nineteen. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I would like to, for councilwoman, to consider this motion. I don't think we had that item on the agenda, and I did call several of our directors, and apparently they're not recommending this service.
Do I hear him, second? The motion dies, and three point nineteen is not approved. Three point twenty?
Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, chief?
Mayor and council, item three twenty, authorization to purchase work uniforms for fire personnel from GT Distributors, Inc. The Mission Fire Department is seeking authorization to purchase daily work uniforms to outfit seventy-seven fire personnel. The total cost of the staff uniforms is thirty-one thousand four twenty-one and ninety-eight cents. Via GT Distributors by-board contract five-eight-seven dash one-nine. Staff and city manager recommends approval. This item now before you.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. This is open for further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Three point two one.
Mayor, city council, good afternoon, or good evening. On item three point two one, mayor, we come before you to amend ordinance forty-eight thirty-three that was approved back on September ninth of two thousand nineteen during the budget process, and at this time we'd like to amend that ordinance. And in your package, you should have the base pay in the Senate package that was approved on September ninth of two thousand nineteen, and at this time we'd like to make those changes. And I'm going to highlight those changes for you. We're going to remove the three percent increase from the base salaries that were given to the civil service employees or to the police officers back in September ninth of two thousand nineteen. And by removing that three percent increase, this is what we want to do. We were recommending the certification pay, the intermediate pay to increase from nine hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, the advanced certification pay to increase from fifteen hundred dollars to three thousand dollars, and the master certification pay to increase from twenty-one hundred dollars to four thousand dollars. On the education pay, everything remains the same, but we do want to add the master's degree with the three thousand dollars. And on the assignment pays, the CID will increase from eighteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. The SWAT certificate, assignment pay will increase from sixteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars, and we're going to add the color guard to twelve hundred dollars. The color guard is a group that participates in a lot of activities but had never been assigned, so at this time, chief wants to do that. And we also want to add that civil service employees are eligible for no more than two assignment pays, and that will be done by the chief of police at his discretion. So at this time, we are recommending approval of the ordinance to amend ordinance forty-eight thirty-three.
I'm going to approve.
Mayor, I have a question.
We have a motion, do I, in a second, and I open it for discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Ochoa.
Jesse, so right now, civil service employees eligible, they're requesting for two assignment pays. How many assignments do they, some of them have? Do some of them have more than two?
I'm going to let Chief Dominguez answer that, because I would not participate as far as who does the assignments. The responsibility falls on the chief of police, and as long as they meet the criteria, and you have the criteria before you, he's the one that does it. But chief, can you answer that and help me out, please?
Right now, ma'am, we have a total of thirty-one officers that would qualify for a second assignment pay. As an example, I can be a field training officer, or I can be an investigator, and also have a certification to do intoxicilizer. But now I'm in criminal investigations. Well, I can now apply for that second assignment pay of twelve hundred dollars to be an intoxicilizer operator. But what I've done, I've added, obviously, to the definitions that go with each of the assignment pays, to assure that we just don't give you twelve hundred dollars. You're going to go and work. And one of the things we have on this particular assignment pay of intoxicilizer operator, if you want that as a second assignment pay, you have to at least work ten eight-hour days during the fiscal year. One of the things that we have, we have our SEP grant from the Texas Department of Transportation. So they will be required to work eight days during an operation, whether it's the first of the year, spring break, Memorial Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend, Labor Day weekend, and the other two days, any day of the year, as long as it's a weekend, like a Friday night or a Saturday night, because that's the most prevalent time that intoxicated drivers are out on the roadways.
So how do you currently have it now? So you're either one or the other? You're either an investigator or you use...
Yes, right now, they only, they only have one assignment pay. They've been limited to one assignment pay.
But I'm sure there's some officers that do both and just not getting paid for one.
That is correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I do also want to add that that subject also came in the collaborative model discussion, how many assignments to go, and the committee and the consensus decision decided to move one only up from one to two, you know, because there were, you know, because we started looking at two, three, four, five assignment, and then the ripple effect goes back to the budget. You know, so we figured that we would compromise, compromise to two assignments at the request with stipulation at the restrictions that the chief has, and that is that it's not just an assignment by name, it's an assignment that they have to perform at the needs of the, of the department.
And then, so would you also have a process of, possibly, if you have a lot of people that have that certification, to kind of do, like, every two years, pick somebody different or to get that experience, so it won't be the same officer?
Well, the way it's...
How you do the FBI, the DEA, all of that?
Right. But, yes. And that's how I configure it right now, based on the study we did on our current staffing levels, is for, we have thirty-one of the one hundred and fifty-seven that would qualify right now, but obviously, I understand what you're saying.
The one fifty are now going to want to, the other...
Well, but you see, in researching it, there's only thirty-one that would qualify for a second assignment pay. So the rest are, can only have one because that's all they're entitled to, because they don't have certification to be an intoxicilizer operation.
I guess my comment is, chief, that you're going to now find yourself with a lot of officers that are now going to maybe possibly want to go and get that certification, because they're going to want the stipend. And so I want to make sure that everybody gets equal opportunity to apply for that position.
Well, and I tell you, just as an example, the first part, the intermediate, the advanced, and the master certification from the state of Texas, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. In that particular category, we have people with masters, advanced, and intermediate, and some with basic. The complaint from some of them, and I can tell you, sixteen of them, is, I've been here eight years and still don't have my intermediate. I've been here nine years and still don't have my intermediate. But I can tell you also from experience that they're not the ones knocking on the door and saying, hey, I want to go to this class and that class. And of course, I try to send everybody, but like anything, you know, if you're concerned, you're going to go get your master's degree and you're going to, and that's why I tell these guys, you need to knock on the door, you need to do not only for yourself but for your family as well, because it involves your family. It involves, it involves your pay. But we're going to take care of them.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, chief. And with this approval, we're limited, and of course, everything will be at his discretion. At this time, we are recommending approval.
Yep. And we will, we have a motion and a second. All we need now is, is any final discussion by the council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and ordinance forty-eight fifty for the record, Ms. Carrillo, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Forty-eight fifty has been approved, Mr. Lema.
Mayor, thank you, and I do want to take this time to wish Ms. Carrillo, she's a long day, but to wish her a happy birthday, so.
It's your birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Facebook, Tommy.
That was going to be my comment. Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, call for four point one, authorization to enter into an agreement with best friends. It's a table item, Mr. Pettis.
Yes, mayor, at this time, we would like additional time for discussion of this item, and so we did meet with representatives just this morning, and so we are currently working on doing an assessment with staff, and so we would like to bring it back in a later time.
Okay. I will let the consensus of the, of the council. So you see, the chair will entertain a motion to untable if the wishes of any of the council members is...
We leave it on the table.
Leave it on the table. Ms. Ochoa, leave it on the table, or do I entertain the motion?
We can leave it. Well, Steph, not, they're the ones asking for it to stay. That's fine.
I'm fine, leaving it on the table.
Okay. Based on the consensus, we're going to leave it on the table, and I'm going to call for five point oh, five point one, city manager's comment?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and I would like to invite the committee to our speedy 5K walk run. It's happening this Saturday, October the nineteenth, twenty nineteen, at eight AM, and the, starting would be at the Mission Event Center. The funds will go towards scholarship to childrens of the law enforcement officers across the Rio Grande Valley. Also, city departments are preparing for a couple of city events. Dia de los Muertos event on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at Mission Historical Museum Annex at seven-thirty PM, and also the City of Mission Halloween Festival on Thursday, October thirty-first, at Leo Peña Placito Park, from six to nine. Also, I would like to announce that the mayor and council members, some of the council members attended, myself and staff, to TML conference this past week, with the City of Mission was awarded the twenty nineteen Texas Municipal League Municipal Excellence Awards and Management Innovations category, so, thank you.
Okay, five point three, mayor's comment, to Mr. Lerma, kind of got item number one, and that's wishing Anna Carrillo happy birthday and recognizing her in public as, you know, wishing you well on your, on your birthday today, and it's very hard when you're on your birthday and still have to work late where we are today. So, but happy birthday, Ms. Carrillo. My next item is that I want to let the public know that the minimum wage for the City of Mission has gone up to ten dollars and fifty cents per hour for the City of Mission, so, just to let you know, as we passed the budget, the budget had, had that in, in place, so the City of Mission now is, the minimum wage is ten, ten dollars and fifty cents. I also want to let the public know that the US Congress, the House of Representatives, did pass a possible law to move up the minimum wage for the United States of America to fifteen dollars per hour. It is right now at the, at the Senate, with the senators, and they're debating whether, whether they're going to approve that or not, but the country in itself will, is looking at that. I also want to announce to the public that on November the fifth, there's going to be a general election, and in the general election, there's going to be a proposition number eight. Proposition number eight on the general election for the, for educational purposes, I'm releasing this information. It will be creating what is called a flood infrastructure fund. It is known as the FIF proposition number eight. In it, it's, it's, it's a goal and objective is to make Texas future flood-proof, flood-proof. But the main thing that I want to let the public know, that it also has an attachment on it, that it estimates for it to have a fund, an opening fund, if it, if it's passed, of seven hundred and ninety-three million dollars for Texas to begin, to begin fighting floods under the Texas Water Development Board. The, the state has issued the, the order that the Texas Water Development Board now is going to be the, the person in charge of the drainage and flooding for, for Texas, but I just, I just want to make sure that you educate yourself, and the pros and the cons of proposition eight, as far as that is concerned, so. And that's pretty much mine, my items, you know, and I will start with the, with the five point three, the city council, and Mr. Vela, we start with you.
No comment today.
No comment?
No.
I have no comments today either.
No comment? No comments? Ms. Ochoa?
I was fortunate enough to attend TML conferences past week, and I just want to give a big high five to our MEDC and our staff over there, our PR department and our administration for applying for this awesome award. It felt really good to be one of, I think, twenty cities up there, but we're the only ones from the Rio Grande Valley, representing Texas Municipal League. I attended several classes, and I think that with the masters in social work, as a city, we need to do so much more with mental health. There is a lot of new funding and all of that going on in the state level, and I think that we need to work as a community and as a city to look into other ways to be better in that of servicing our constituents, because each and every one of us here knows somebody or have somebody in our family with mental health, and so we need to be aware of all of that. And thank you, and I think this month is dyslexia month and mental health, and there's just a lot of different things, and I want to thank staff for their hard work and dedication. It's a new budget year, so I hope that that helps you all move forward, but we need to work smarter and really think before we spend the money, because we need to increase our fund balance, right? So thank you.
Okay.
And happy birthday, Anna.
Now, I will entertain a motion to, to, for executive session.
Boomed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I'm going to move into regular session?
Second.
Here we go. Moving to, from executive session pursuant to BTCAA Government Code, section five-five-one-zero-zero-one, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and I, I will ask our consultant, I mean, our consultation with attorney, section five-five-one-zero-zero-seven-one, six point one A.
On six point one A, mayor, there is no action to be taken.
Thank you. Six point one B?
On six point one B, there is an action and approval of resolution for Eduardo's number thirteen subdivision, number fourteen subdivision, number fifteen subdivision, and Eduardo's number seventeen subdivision. This is a waterline access agreement which we are approving tonight for those four subdivisions and their accompanying resolutions.
Do we have a...
To approve, mayor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, before I entertain resolution numbers, please.
Eduardo's thirteen, resolution sixteen-twenty. Eduardo's fourteen, resolution sixteen-twenty-one. Eduardo's fifteen, sixteen-twenty-two. And Eduardo seventeen, resolution sixteen-twenty.
Mr. Plata, will entertain your motion.
To approve resolution sixteen-twenty, sixteen-twenty-one, sixteen-twenty-two, sixteen-twenty-three.
Do I hear him, a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is any discussion by any of the council members before. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and...
Mayor, I'm going to adjourn.
We have seven point oh, motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, and it's, we're adjourned.